Good evening, could we stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome, this is the regular public meeting of the North Brunswick Township Board of Education for Wednesday, September 27th, 2023. Could we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Ali.
Here.
Mr. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Logori.
Here.
Dr. Patel. Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
The New Jersey, thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Sunday, January 29th, 2023 in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board, reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Loomwood Place, North Brunswick; mailed to the Home News Tribune, the Sentinel, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly-elected board members. We do have one excellent presentation this evening, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Shiroka. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logori. This evening, we will be having a presentation on some of our test scores. This begins the season of all the data that we have gotten from our different test scores. So, tonight, we will be seeing the Spring 2023 MBT Schools Alternate Assessments, which are the DLM and the Access for Ls. And I will invite Mercedes Chang and Yessenia Morales up to come present. It should be on, I did turn it on unless it went off. You can pick it up.
Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again and everybody at home who's watching. I am here this evening to present the DLM scores and Access for Ls scores. Mrs. Morales will join me when we move towards the Access for Ls data. Shiroka's gonna follow my cues. There is a lot of information on the slides, and you're more than capable of reading, so I will summarize a lot of it. First, let me begin by explaining why these are alternate assessments, which actually, I think, is a tricky terminology. The Access for Ls is obligatory for all students who are multilingual learners, but the Dynamic Learning Maps luckily can be an alternate to the NJSLA. So unfortunately, the multilingual learners do have to take both Access for Ls and NJSLA, but our most cognitively impaired students only have to take the DLM. So alternate for one of the groups, additional for the other set of students. The DLM is New Jersey DOE's online alternate assessment for students with the most significant disabilities. And they take these in the same subjects and the same grade as the NJSLA. The Access for Ls is the assessing comprehension and communication in English state-to-state. That's important because every state gives a variation of the assessment and has their own procedures for the assessment. So obviously, we're following the New Jersey guidelines. It is secure, mainly online, there are some paper components. And it does need to be administered to all students who are considered eligible for Ls services. Interestingly enough, a parent can refuse Ls services, but a parent cannot refuse for their child to take the Access for Ls test. So, we don't have many instances where our parents refuse minor services, but if they did, the students would still have to sit for the Access for Ls test according to the state of majors. We'll start with the DLM. It really is an assessment that attempts to have students show what they know in the same standards that everyone else has to show what they know, but slightly different because of the student's disabilities, if that makes sense. So, going towards the same trajectory, but different tasks, and a lot more shorter tasks, for sure, and one-to-one with the teacher. So, different settings, for sure. The learning map, you can skip on, Mrs. Shiroka, thank you. The learning map is a network of sequence learning targets. Think of it as like, hmm, I'm not a science person, but when you're looking at the sky and all the stars are connected, it gets you to one location or one place. Again, still trying to assess the same standards or portions of the same standards that other students are assessed on, but at a different level. And when we use the DLM, we're basically meeting a state requirement that we are assessing students with disabilities by testing them against our standards. We can use these scores on some level, but the results are very individualized. So generally, we try not to make big generalizations based on the scores because every child's classification is different, every child's modifications and accommodations are different. So really, we use them as one measure of how a student is growing. Students who have IEPs are definitely being assessed every day, formally and informally throughout the year, and also, we're always checking their progress towards their IEP goals, which is really the most important thing we could be doing. The IEP goals are developed in such a way that students are hopefully getting goals that they can really achieve. And then this assessment is just one more measure of how they're doing towards that. So we assess in grades three to eight and in 11. Those are our science students, grade 11 always takes science. Always one-to-one with the teacher. Everybody has to be certified, lots of training required, must pass the test so that we are confident that they can administer the assessment because we're not micromanaging that process. They're really administering this over many weeks in their classrooms with our supervision and our support. Teachers can help students with technology questions, technology glitches, can clarify questions, and students do work at their own pace, it's pretty untimed. So last spring, we tested between April 3rd and May 26th. The window's about the same every year. And in ELA and Math, we have about five to seven test sessions, but they're short, and in Science, nine test sessions, about five to 15 minutes each, and also very dependent on the child's and how much they understand, how much they're trying to put forth, and you know, typical. We tested 54 students this year, which is about 22 students fewer than we tested last year. I don't think that's either good or bad, it's just information. We maybe had some students whose IEP changed, and now they can take the NJSLA, but for whatever reason, we did test fewer students, especially at the elementary level. Most of the students we tested were at Loomwood and MBTMS. So I just want to show you the performance levels. As you know, from me doing these presentations, every assessment has their own set of criteria for what's considered passing or not passing, or proficient, not proficient. So same for DLM, this is a four-point system, Emerging, Approaching, Target, and Advanced. And typically, across the state, most students perform in the Emerging, Approaching categories, and that makes a lot of sense for the student's disabilities and academic needs. So here we go with the data. At grade three, 80% of our students score in the Emerging range and 20% in the Approaching range. We had no students at Target or Advanced. Again, given that these are the most cognitively disabled students, that makes some sense. At grade four, same exact set of data. And at grade five, a little bit more of a spread. We had 8% students performing Advanced, which hopefully, you know, case managers and teachers would correlate that data with how the child's doing in class. That could impact, you know, if we're gonna change goals, that's sort of all positive stuff. Target, 42%, and a split between Emerging and Approaching at 25%. And grade six, seven, and eight, these are all tested grades, don't forget. We had 40% of students at Emerging in grade six, at 60% at Approaching. A nice little difference there from third grade. And still, no students at Target or Advanced. And in grade seven, 50% at Emerging and 33% at Approaching, with a few students at Target and Advanced. In eighth grade, we have 15% students at Target, 38% Approaching, and 46 still in the Emerging range. And then our 11th graders, 50% in both the Emerging and Approaching categories. That number should say 54, by the way, not 70, too, I apologize. And we have Math, thank you. Grade three, we can go back on, Mrs. Shiroka, thank you. About 80% Emerging, so more students in Emerging for Math than there were for Language Arts, and 20% Approaching. And in fourth grade, exactly the same, which is interesting. In ELA, the data is exactly the same for third and fourth grade as well. And then fifth grade, 16% Emerging, which is a great number because now that means you have a lot more students at the Approaching target, and as you can see, 34% of them in the Advanced range for fifth grade. We also had a lot more fifth graders testing, so it's a numbers game, you know. I think I had two third graders testing. So it'll be like one-on-one versus, you know, you have 20-something fifth graders testing. The percentages are gonna definitely change. Then you have grade six and seven, 80 and 20, versus 92% Emerging in Math at seventh grade and eight Approaching at seventh grade. Eighth grade, they're all so different at each grade. Eighth grade Emerging, 69%, and Approaching, 23%. And 50/50 for our 11th graders once again. Probably because, again, I believe there was only like three of them, or two of them. And then we have Science, and I think, you know, Science is obviously a tricky one, but we do test in Science for NJSLA, so the DLM has to mirror that. So we're testing in Science in DLM. 50% of the kids were Emerging at fifth grade, 54 Emerging in eighth grade, and 100% of the students Emerging in grade 11. I would say, I'm gonna present NJSLA data in October, and you'll see that the Science data there matches this. And then Approaching, we had about 33% in fifth grade and 38% in eighth grade, with a few students meeting the at-target range in fifth grade and a few students meeting the at-target range in eighth grade. Any questions about DLM? So last year, Mrs. Yessenia Morales joined me, and I thought she did a fantastic job. Two things I want to point out is, Mrs. Morales is the backup district test coordinator, so if Mrs. Chang, like, breaks her shoulder again or something, Mrs. Morales has the pleasure of taking over. So that's one of her roles, but the other role that she has, as you know, especially as we've been seeing our members increase in multilingual learners, is she's the K-12 supervisor of oral languages and ESR. And I'm trying to move away from ESR, I'm multilingual.
I have to change the title.
So I bring her here because I think she has a world of knowledge and can describe the assessment better than anyone can. The purpose of the assessment, the intention behind the assessment, and then I'll share some of the numbers with you, okay? You can just nod your head at Mrs. Shiroka, kind of chill, no one's trying to...
Tell me.
So, thank you. So the students take the WEATA Access, and sorry for my low voice, I have a pretty bad allergy, so my voice is a little raspy. But the students take Access for Ls, and what this measures is their proficiency in English and academic language. So I want to stress that as a point that this does not measure their social language. So a student can still be proficient, and I use air quotes, but not necessarily in their academic language. Each type of language takes a couple of years to grow. So for instance, for social language, for a student to be proficient, what we hear in the hallway, students talking, or emailing, or texting, that language takes only one to two years for a student to be proficient. However, what we consider academic language, which is what this test is measuring, takes anywhere, if you read the data, anywhere from five to 10 years for academic language, for a student to be truly proficient in that language, in English. So with the WEATA Access, this, like I said, it measures that academic language. And we use these scores more for to help us with our teacher recommendation for placement. We also use that score to monitor how they're doing in their English acquisition, if we need to change their placement in their classes. So we use that, like I said, to monitor more their language proficiency levels and to guide our instruction on what are the students' needs and what supports do they need in the classroom. So when they are testing, we do test K through 12. We do do in small group setting, so we try to keep it no bigger than 15 students at that point. All the teachers are required to train, and they have to pass a quiz or an assessment of 80%. Like the DLM or NJSLA, they are permitted to help students in the sense of the technology question, but they're not permitted to do anything else. They can clarify directions, but that's about the extent of their help. Students also work at their own pace for this test. It is, they do have suggested times for how long a unit is supposed to take, but the student has technically all day if they'd like to take, finish one portion of the test for all. Their reading, the listening, and the speaking, and so on. So for the Spring 2023, we did, we had one testing window, which was from February 14th to April 8th, which is usually the same time. They always test around that same window. Oh, no, I'm good, sorry. Each of the domains, like I say, take about 50 to 90 minutes. Some students use more time or less. We do structure the test in tiers according to AC, from A to C, and C is the highest tier. We test in specific grade clusters, so kindergarten tests by itself, then you test in grades one and two, two and, I'm sorry, grades K and one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, and then nine, 12. In order for students to have any type of score, they have to have started the test so that we could get a summative overall score. Last year, we tested the most amount of students that we've ever, I think, had for MLs, and it was 470 students that we tested. And each domain is scored, so there are four domains. There is reading, listening, writing, and speaking. And then you have additional scores, which are composite scores of those four domains. And then you get the oral language score, which is a composite score of their listening and speaking skills, their literacy skill, which is a composite score of their reading and their writing, and then you get a general overall score. However, with the composite scores and the overall scores, I just want to say that every student's journey in language acquisition is different. So these scores, the composite scores, even though they give us a summary of what the skills, the kids can do, skill-wise, we do like to look at the individual domains to give us more informative view of what they can do in each of those domains because listening and speaking usually are acquired a lot faster than reading and writing. So like I said, students in grades one through 12 are tested, I'm sorry, K through 12, but the students in grades one through 12, they can take that through the computer. Students in grades one through three, they take a paper version of the writing. And then the kindergarteners, we do paper format, one-on-one, so they take a little bit longer. So for Access, we have six levels of mastery. New Jersey's cutoff score is a 4.5. So usually, that means they are at the expanding level, so they're not truly averaging or reaching. By that time, they would have exited the program. We do continue to monitor them after they leave for two years to make sure that they are still progressing forward and moving forward in their language proficiency acquisition journey. So they never really leave us, we're always watching to making sure they're doing all right. So for the scores, so you can see their progression in language. The kindergarten, last year, we had a big number of kindergarteners that we tested, so it was 68%. But you can see that the pattern of the data shows their language acquisition journey, almost as if you were to follow the clusters. You can see that in kindergarten, of course, when they enter, they really don't have a lot of academic language. That makes sense, that they're gonna be there. And then in grades one and two, they stay in that Emerging, Developing level for two to three years, so it makes sense. And then you can see that growth in the fourth grade. So in the fifth grade, it's a little all over the place, depending where the kids enter our school. So you know, our population is a very transient population, so sometimes, we're getting them at all grade levels. So the numbers aren't always gonna be, they're gonna be a little scattered. But we are seeing that a lot of our fifth through eighth graders are in the developing and bridging stage, so that's wonderful news for us. And then for our ninth to 12th graders, like I said, the data is all over the place, but it's also because we get a lot of high school students that come in, our MLs. So if they come to us at the ninth grade level, it's very difficult, within a one-to-two-year process, get them all the way where they need to be if it's five-to-seven-year process for them to actually become proficient. So the data is where it's supposed to be, given where each of the students are, where they're entering with their language journey. So you have your ninth graders that are 38%, but you have a few smattering in the expanding. And then the 10th graders as well, you have all the way to the expanding. And then our 11th and 12th graders, if they came in a little bit later, are not quite there, but they will be. Any questions?
Do you have data that tracks students if they had entered school in district, like at kindergarten or first grade? And can you see that they are tracking as you expect?
Yeah, so we do monitor them, so we do progress continually monitoring, so monitoring, for each of our students until they exit, and then once they exit, they enter a different phase of monitor, monitoring, sorry, where we monitor them for an additional two years. So we're always tracking to see where they are academically.
Have we seen that trend, kind of like the graph where it goes?
Where they, yes, we do.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
Any final presentation? Do we have a, I guess, a number, like aggregate number of out of the total students we have in new grades? How many could have been tested versus how many we actually did test?
So they all tested, all 470 students need to be tested. So all of them did test.
I have a question. So 470 were tested this year, and I understand that is gonna be the biggest number because there has been an influx of either the migrant or immigrant population coming in, so I do understand that. But could you give us comparison for last year, how many did we test, if you recall?
We tested about 357 last year.
Okay, I just wanted to get a estimate to see how much we've grown in that population. And then if the length of time is about five to 10 years for them to actually acquire academic language, have we been able to see in our district, again, I do understand it's a transient population, how long on average it takes for our students, if they are coming in earlier on, how quickly they are exited with the Access testing?
Usually, if they come in within kindergarten or kindergarten grade, we see them exit by third or fourth.
Literally, that chart made so much sense, if you go back to it. If they were coming in kindergarten, it flows perfectly.
Right.
Yeah, you can see that, the progression.
You can see that, yeah, you can see the progression there. So if they came to us by kindergarten and didn't leave, didn't move anywhere else, they will exit by third or fourth.
Earlier, right, in much shorter than five to 10 years, which is wonderful, okay.
Have we been able to pull out any data from the dual-language programs at Parsons and LP in comparisons yet?
Not yet, but I am getting my elevation platform, so I'll be able to compare all that a little bit easier.
Yeah, that would be exciting to see, interesting to see.
What, do we know, what's the number of students who have exited the program?
For this year?
Just in total, I guess.
Oh, in, you do this year.
For this year, yes.
For this year, we exited about 80 students. We exited using Access and also the WEATA model. The New Jersey allows two forms of assessments to be used to exit a student. With Access scores, they get the cutoff score with 4.5. And we also test using the WEATA model with 4.5 cutoff scores. But with that specific test, we do have to have other supporting documents, such as grades and other scores to validate why we are exiting the student if we're using that alternate assessment as a form of exit.
Gotcha. And if those, so if those students hadn't been exited, it would have been 550 students total?
No, no, those two, that's the last year. We just at the beginning of this year exited. I mean, currently, right now, we are at 480 students. So we did drop, but that's because we exited students, students have transferred out. Students are still transferring in, just got a couple forms, I gotta process. So the numbers are constantly fluctuating. But right now, as of five minutes ago, 480.
Be different tomorrow morning.
I think ESR is great, but most of the students still end up needing support. And they're still taking the NJSLA and haven't fully acquired the academic language that we would have, you know, having been...
Yes, and the rule is, if I recall, is if you come into the country before June, you have to take the NJSLA the following spring. But if you come in July 1st or after, you don't have to take the NJSLA English part, ELA part. But you have to take the math, everybody has to take the math part, even though there's a lot of reading in it.
It's an arbitrary date.
Yep.
Arbitrary date. And the math, unfortunately, if they don't speak Spanish, that's the only other language that they offer as an alternate. But if you speak Arabic or Urdu, you are obligated to take the math in English. There's no other language.
And those students in grade three through 11 still have to take NJSLA on top of Access.
They take both.
They take both.
Spend a lot of time testing.
It's a lot. It's very good.
I wonder, so do we have like any information or any just data around like how these population of our students are doing on like the SAT, like the ACT, or like any, like if they're in like any like higher-level classes? And just to see like how they're doing outside of just their language acquisition?
For our high school, I don't know the number right now off the top of my head, but yes, many of our students do take AP classes. They'll take either AP Spanish, AP Spanish, they'll take AP Computer Science, I believe was one of them that I saw. I also saw them in, sorry, because I look at all their schedules to make sure that it's correct, so I'm drawing a blank, but they're in AP Forensics. So yes, they do take higher-level courses, and we do encourage them to take all of those courses.
Thank you.
And we provide support, so we let the teacher know, like, this is a multilingual student, please, you know, if they need any additional support or extra time. And the teachers are always willing and hopeful and supporting our MLs.
Great questions, everyone. My question would be, especially with that fifth grade and beyond data, you guys as a team now, what will you guys do with that data to assess and move forward?
So we start to set up goals for these, for our students, so different target goals where we want to see their language progress. And then we also start, we use that data to set up almost like our own little learning plan, so the teachers know what the students are able to do in the classroom, and we share those out to the teachers. So there would be like can-do descriptors. So if the student is in the entering, they can possibly only answer like yes-or-no questions, or they can answer, they can do like bullet points. So we share what their specific category or mastery level is and what they can do language-wise at that level. We're also offering tutoring services through Title III and Esther at the high school, as much support as we can offer, you know, with everybody's students. Do also have other activities they want to be involved in, right, ladies? But definitely trying to put it all together so that they feel successful.
Thank you both very much for the very informative presentation.
Are you at home, or is it here? These are your contact people, I am the district testing coordinator, so I would be your go-to person at the higher level, but if you have contact specific, I mean, as you can see, she's super knowledgeable, and this is why I invited her, and thank you so much for coming. Because our supervisors just have a breadth of knowledge, and so if you have any questions, please let us know, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Be back next month.
Appreciate it.
Tis the season.
Mr. Brockman, you Mr. Brockman, you want to move on item six for us, please?
Sure. Make a motion to approve the following board minutes. Regular public meeting, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are accepted.
Any communications this evening?
No communications, but I do have my administrative report.
We'll move to item eight and the administrative report. Thank you.
Very good. Good evening to all of our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. I would like to thank all of our staff and families and students for a very smooth start to twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Our back-to-school nights were a great success, and it was great to see so many families out, learning about their child's classrooms. As we wrap up our first month of school, I'd like to take time to focus on one of our district goals, improving our attendance rate. The actual goal states, "The district will promote awareness of the importance of school attendance, work to improve attendance data, and reduce the number of chronically absent students in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year." And in case you were wondering, chronic absenteeism is defined as missing ten percent of a school days for any reason, excused or unexcused, in one school year. So in a hundred and eighty-day school year, that's eighteen or more days. Throughout the country, districts have struggled with student attendance since the start of the pandemic, and even more so as districts reopened in the last two years. As a district, this is certainly understandable, as we have emphasized that parents should keep their children home when they are sick. However, we do have many cases of students missing school way beyond typical numbers. Showing up for school has a significant impact on a student's academic success, starting in preschool and continuing through high school. Even as children grow older and more independent, families play a key role in making sure students get to school safely every day. It's important that we all understand why attendance is so important for success in school and in life. The impact on academics and graduation rates is well documented. The fiscal impact of low attendance can be devastating and impair the district's ability to provide needed programs and resources to our students. North Brunswick Township Schools is committed to reducing student absences regardless of the reason, because we know that students who attend school every day will succeed tomorrow. Please be on the lookout next week for an attendance survey for parents to help our district better understand your concerns about attendance and the challenges you may face as a family. As a district, we are really committed to working with each family to support your student's success and their regular on-time attendance to school. A couple of other events coming up. We have the NBT ECC Touch a Truck event tomorrow night, starting at four-thirty here on our Board of Ed NBT ECC parking lot, which looks to be a very popular event, as it was last year. And we have the homecoming football game this Friday at seven PM, so come on out and support the Raiders. That is my report for the evening. Mr. President?
Thank you very much. We'll move to our student report, and we want to welcome our new student reps, our new SGO president and our new SGO rep to the Board of Ed. For those who didn't get a chance to meet them, why don't you begin your report by introducing yourselves to us and to the millions of viewers at home who may be watching this meeting as well, and then proceed with your report. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Faber Babalola, and I'm SGO president.
Hi, my name is Coral Martinez-Tekan Wewi, and I am vice president of SGO and Board of Ed.
So first off, we wanted to start by saying SGO held our annual Club Fest. So students got to watch a video about the clubs on September the seventh. And then after school, students could like meet with representatives of the clubs to see if that club was a good fit for them.
SGO General Assembly held our first meeting where we chose this year's charity that is North Brunswick Domestic Violence Response Team. We will work to raise five thousand dollars for this team, and we are currently working to have them come to future meetings to share with students what they're about and what they will do with our community. This week is pep rally, pep week at MBTHS. Students are participating in varieties of spirit days, and on Friday, we will have our Fall Pep Rally to honor our fall athletes, have a class competition for Spirit Cup, and announce our homecoming court.
So homecoming would take place this Saturday at seven to ten PM, and our theme is Out of This World. And clubs are starting to like take place right now, so the Latin American Club are announcing like ways we can celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. We look forward to your reports every month, and have a great homecoming weekend. Committee reports. Let's go in chronological order. Human Resources, Mr. Wen.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. The Human Resources and Community Relations Committee met on Wednesday, September twentieth, to discuss various personnel and community topics. For all those on tonight's agenda who are either resigning or retiring, the board thanks them for their service and wishes them well. As of last Wednesday, there were only eight certificated and fifteen support staff openings in the district for the current school year. Openings have been posted on our website and on social media. Kudos to Amy and her staff and the various administrative teams across the district for working hard to find qualified people to fill open positions. And for those who are new to the district, we welcome you warmly to the North Brunswick School District. We also discussed upcoming leaves of absences and how those positions are being filled. We also discussed amendments regarding six teaching periods and grade level leader changes. In tonight's agenda, you'll also see the list of degree level changes. For all of your, all the staff on this list, congratulations on your hard work, on your degree advancements. The Hall of Fame Committee is also moving forward with their planning for the new class of Hall of Fame nominees. More information will be following, coming in the following months. And finally, we had our first reading of the following policies. PNR three-one-six-zero, physical examination for teaching staff. PNR four-one-six-zero, physical examination for support staff. PNR eight-four-six-one, reporting violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, bullying, alcohol, and other drug offenses. And P nine-one-two-zero, public relations program. That is all from my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wen. Business operations, Ms. James?
Sure. The Business Operations Committee met on Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. We are pleased to report that we have been approved for our ROD grants for all six schools. These grants provide up to forty percent of funding for eligible capital projects. Our sincere thanks is extended to all that have assisted in this application process and our business office for working in tandem with those individuals. As to facilities at the high school, our roof work is complete. The HVAC recommissioning of ten units continue. Our science workstations are complete on time and with some cost savings. As to the TV studios at the high school, the scope of work is done. We are exploring options as to the repainting of the pool, which will be grant-funded, and we're exploring those options for efficiency and to be economical, as always. At Linwood, the chillers will be replaced, subject to some options being explored there. HVAC is also complete. At the elementary schools, we discussed the playgrounds at LP and Parsons. We anticipate completion in or around November for LP. As for Parsons, we are presently without a playground because a prior playground had to be taken down for safety reasons. We do understand that the township has a plan to replace the one near Babbage Park. However, should we utilize this, we will need to discuss in collaboration with the township what is reasonably expected of us for such use. We hope for fruitful conversations in that regard. As for transportation, we have acquired three vans. As to finance, the district has begun with a new FSA vendor that provides some savings and improved customer service for our staff. We encourage all families to fill out the lunch applications, which are available on our website and also in the main offices at the schools. Adhering to this process helps to protect the fiscal health of our district by accurately assessing the need for federal reimbursements and subsidies and avoiding any unforeseen fiscal imbalances. If necessary, the district can offer guidance and support to parents or guardians who may require assistance with the application process. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. James. The Education Committee filling in for Dr. Patel, Ms. Toth.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So the Education Committee met on Wednesday, September twentieth at seven PM. All of our members of the committee were in attendance. So first, we discussed within curriculum, instruction, and technology. We had a presentation by Mr. Mark Zalinski, our supervisor of Social Studies, grade nine through twelve, on a potential MBTHS history project. We discussed some curriculum revisions and updates ongoing within the high school. We have two new courses that were added, some revisions, and a new course added in the middle school level as well. We discussed our SOAR data. We also discussed the Rutgers University GSE project. It's a partnership with district data. We also celebrated that North Brunswick Township High School was the winner of best, or one of the winners of best high schools through the U.S. News reports. This was the fourth year in a row that we actually achieved this. We also discussed some assessments and grants, again, the presentation by Mrs. Mercy Chang. And then we also had some policies and regulations for first reading that are listed on tonight's agenda. Again, some updated policies and updated regulations. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you all for your great reports. Ms. Keefe, do you have anything for negotiations this evening?
None this time, then, Mr. President.
Okay, great. Ms. Keefe, would then you take item nine, please?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to approve the administrative student and committee reports.
Second.
Any further discussion on item nine?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All the reports and minutes are accepted, or all the reports are accepted.
Thank you. So we'll review the agenda for this evening's meeting. As in past months, everyone received this last week electronically. Any changes to that electronic version of the agenda would be in bold print this evening on the agenda at the dais. We'll begin our review. We're already on page two with pages two and three. Pages four and five. Pages six and seven. Pages eight and nine. Pages ten and eleven. Pages twelve and thirteen. Pages fourteen and fifteen. Pages sixteen and seventeen. Pages eighteen and nineteen. Pages twenty and twenty-one. Pages twenty-two and twenty-three. And pages twenty-four and twenty-five. Any questions from the board on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to item eleven, which is public session on agenda items only for this evening. If anyone from the public would have any questions on agenda items only, now would be your chance, and you'll have three minutes to approach. And seeing none, would someone please move to close this portion of the public meeting?
Some moves.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This session is closed.
Mr. Carter, would you move on consent agenda, please? Item thirteen.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. Personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous, finance items one through three, policy and transportation.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hold call, please.
Yes. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Brockman?
Yes, to all consent agenda items with the exception of curriculum and instruction item one S, for which I abstain.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, to all consent agenda items with the exception of curriculum and instruction items one S and finance item one, bills list college board, for which I abstain.
Thank you. Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the agenda items have been approved and accepted.
Thank you. Fast forward to page twenty-four, folks. We'll now entertain a public session on any matter. If anyone would like to approach on this public session, you would now have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. There's a button. Oh, she shut it off. Takes a second. Yeah, there it goes. Good evening, everybody. I want to congratulate our staff on having a wonderful opening to the school year, and it was, it was very good opening to the school year. We definitely, you know, it's always a hard transition coming back to the summer and everything, and I think it went really, really well. The MBTA was at our back-to-school nights, helping the district sign up families for free and reduced lunch. We were able to collect a lot of forms on behalf of families, so we are happy to help out with that endeavor. And lastly, I would like to invite not only the board members, but also the entire North Brunswick community to our Meet the Candidates Night. We are hosting that on October fifth. It is our second annual Meet the Candidates Night, and that is going to be at the Middle School Auditorium at seven PM. Last year, it was only virtual. This year, it is open to the public and it is virtual. So you have a choice of how you would like to attend. You can, you know, sit in your pajamas in your living room watching, or you can come to the MBTMS Auditorium, where not only can you hear the candidates talk about their different points of views, you can also have a chance to meet them as well and to talk with them. So we welcome the community to come and attend and, you know, do your civic duty. Thank you very much.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Sorry, Beth Pastner, MBTA president.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public this evening? Seeing none, would somebody please move to close this public portion?
Some moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This session is closed.
At this time, we'll be going into closed session, whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one PL nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented do exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as followed: personnel matters, negotiations, legal matters, and student matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately, and can I please get a motion to go into closed session?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can go into closed session.
Thank you. We'll be going to closed session. Thank you.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you. Coral, nice to meet you. See you next month, girls.
Have a great night. You too.
Thank you.
Enjoy homecoming.
Enjoy homecoming.
Thank you.[456.13]
Folks, could we get a motion to go back into open session, please?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back in session.
Ms. Keefe, would you address your motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve two sidebar agreements between the North Brunswick Township Board of Education and the North Brunswick Township Board of Education Association for the 2224 contract agreement relative to articles as stated in appendices D and E3.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Mr. Carter?
Jason.
Oh. We'll just skip them. Okay. Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Oops, sorry.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
The motion is...
Hold on. Mr. Carter, for the record, your vote on the motions, which you're aware of, I believe?
This sidebar? Yes. Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. Mr. Wen, if you want to take one of your two motions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to approve the termination of employee numbers 8784 effective September 15, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
And that motion is approved.
Thank you. And the last one, please?
Yes. I would like to move to approve the leave of absence without pay for employee number 5675 effective September 19, 2023 through October 31, 2023.
Second. Any further discussion? Again, a roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
And this one has passed as well.
Great. Thank you. A motion to adjourn, please.
Still moving.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.